Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the September 27 Shelby Township Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Meredith.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Grot.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Larray.
Here.
Chairman Moffett is out this evening. Acting Chairman Turner.
Here.
We are chairman. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is approval of our minutes from the September 13, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Support.
And moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Tonight we have two site plans and one public hearing at the end. The first is Site Plan Number 21-36, Andre Qualm, HSB Architects and Engineers for Beyond Juice. 13987 Hall Road, north side of Hall Road, east side of Shaner, Hall Road Crossing Shopping Center, a facade remodel. That's the applicant. If they're in the audience, please come up and let us know what they're going to do. Julie?
Chairman Turner, the applicant is not in the audience, but I just wanted to give a brief overview. This is just for a facade improvement for Beyond Juice that is over by the Boston Market Shopping Center. And what they're doing there is just an addition of the facade over the canopy to make it look like the Boston Market canopy. So that is the only renovation to this facade.
I didn't have any problem with it. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Grot, yes.
Just a question for the planner. Did they meet all the requirements, specifications?
They have, Mr. Grot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Grot, go ahead.
I move to approve Site Plan Number 21-36, Andre Qualm for Belana Properties, parcel number 23-07-36-300-018, located north of Hall Road, east side of Shaner, for the canopy facade renovation at the southwest portion of the building.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Grot, supported by Commissioner Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Grot?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Next item is Site Plan Number 21-33, Bennett Donaldson, J.B. Donaldson Company, 14670, 23 Mile Road, located on the south side of 23 Mile Road between Hayes and Shaner, industrial site condominiums, preliminary review. Is the applicant in the audience? Come on down. What I'll have you do is give us your name and address for the record. And when you're done, you can sign the sheet for us, okay?
Sure. I am not Mr. Bennett Donaldson. I work for J.B. Donaldson, but he was unable to attend.
Your name and address, please.
Scott Zowada, Z.W.A.D.A.
Address?
301 South Laurel, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067.
All right. What are you proposing?
Well, we're proposing a 60-acre development site condominium for light manufacturing. It's five parcels. We already went through site plan approval for the CIE site back in March, which was approved by this board. And we are looking to, it was, actually, it was recommended from the planning commission that we go in for a site condo. So we are heeding their advice and looking forward to building out the development.
Okay. Julie, you want to fill us in a little bit? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Turner. This is, like Mr. Zowada said, this is for a site, industrial site condominium development. This was previously approved, one of the parcels earlier this year for CIE, which was a 253,000-square-foot industrial building. At that time, it was approved under a single site, and I understand Mr. Donaldson wanted to develop this property as a site condominium. So before we proceeded with any other site plans on this, on these properties, we had asked him to come in for an industrial site condominium. Although the plans were a little light, I don't have any problems with them submitting for final and proceeding with the project. However, like I said, there are some items that still need to be addressed, but I don't have any problems. As the site is currently zoned light manufacturing and the intent of the property being developed as industrial, I don't have any concern with it.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions of the petitioner or the planner? Hearing none, I think it would be good to get this property redeveloped and reused and put it to good use for the township. So hoping to move forward with this. Any motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Grot.
Move to support to conclude Site Plan Number 21-33, J.B. Donaldson for Shelby, 23 LLC, 14670, 23 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-24-201-034, located on the south side of 23 Mile Road, west of Hayes Road, has merit in the ability to meet the township zoning ordinance requirements. The planning commission offers a favorable recommendation for the required variance on Unit 4 for the frontage on public-private road, frontage less than the required 100 feet. Is that the end of the motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Support.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Grot, supported by Commissioner Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Grot?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck. Next item is the Site Plan Number 21-22, SLU-5, for Pure Trucking, 47861 Ryan Road, located on the west side of Ryan Road, north of Auburn Road, outdoor truck storage with wash and repair facility. This is a public hearing, and I'll ask the secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of this following special land use. Applicant, Fikri Jeju, Pure Trucking, 1009 Pembroke Court, Rochester Hills, Michigan, 48307. Proposed use: outdoor storage, truck parking, wash, truck repair, and two industrial buildings. Location: 47861 Ryan Road, west side of Ryan, south of Hamlin Road. Site Plan Number 21-22, SLU-5, Sidwell Number 23-07-30-426-006, and 23-07-30-200-011. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 27, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use in the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department and the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Macomb Daily on September 10, 2021. There were 35 property owners and two applicants notified on September 7, 2021.
Thank you. And Mrs. Meredith, does the notice meet all legal requirements as stipulated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it does.
Could you explain the uses under the present zoning and if the special land use request is appropriate for the district?
Mr. Chair, this area is zoned LM pursuant to 3.19 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinance. This would be special land use, this request, under Section C, and then also under Section 4.53. Special land use standards must be met as set forth in Section 6.5. So this would be an appropriate request.
All right, thank you. Secretary Moore, did we get any correspondence on this request?
We did, Mr. Chair, from a Larry and Kimberly nut. They live right on Ryan Road, 47800 Ryan Road, directly across from this site. They have concerns, the dust and noise pollution have been extremely worrisome for them, and that is their concern.
All right, thank you. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. Petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be opened to the public, and then the petitioner may be called up to make concluding remarks. So I have the petitioner come up. I see he's already here. Go ahead and make your presentation, Pete.
Good evening. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township Meeting, Michigan. Representing the petitioner, Mr. Jeju and Pure Transportation. I have a PDF file that they're going to project on the screen, I think, so I'll be going through that fairly quickly and then talking a little bit about traffic on Ryan because that's going to be a discussion item, whether I bring it up or not. So if you'll allow me. The site is on the west side of Ryan, between Auburn and Hamlin. That's the two parcels that are in orange there on the aerial that I'm projecting there. There are, as I said, there's two parcels. There's about a nine-and-a-half-acre parcel that actually has the frontage on Ryan, and then there's an 11.8-acre parcel that's the landlocked to the back. The idea is to purchase, the applicant would like to purchase them both and develop them jointly. So that's 21.3 acres. It's all zoned LM. To the north is LM. There's a vacant parcel, and then peak asphalt is also LM, going sort of around to the west. Auto pallets, LM. To the southwest, however, there's a patch of R10. That's the back end of a project called Stone Ridge North that hasn't developed up here. They've been concentrating their work and their development down on Auburn Road, but that is technically part of that same parcel. And then to the south is also LM. Across the street, across Ryan, on the east side at the north is, of course, Riverbend's Park, and then just south of there is the fire station, and then just south of there is an R1C subdivision. Actually, it's Supervisor's Platte of Sunset Farms Number 1, I believe. So, and then is zoned R1C there. How come we're not scrolling here? Did I wait too long? All right. This next, it's just the existing conditions plan. Sorry, it's a fairly small scale, so you can't see it very well. It's the actual topography there on the parcel right now. It's basically undeveloped. There's a couple of sheds and a barn and some gravel, sort of outside parking area. And there is an existing driveway out to Ryan that we are not using. It's going to, it's going to be taken out as the project might progress. All right, here's the, sort of a overview of the entire project. The applicant's proposing two buildings, one that is closer to Ryan, and that is really going to be the predominant visual features, that first building. I have the rendering of that first building on the top there. I'll get to those slides later for the audience and if you want to see it. But that's the, that's the building that's facing Ryan. It's about 29,000 square feet. It has some warehouse, and it has a two-story office in the front, okay? And the rear building further back is, it's separated by a few hundred feet. That's so that trucks can get in between the two buildings because they're going to have to circulate in there. But that rear building has got some more warehouse, a little bit more office, again, two-story office. There's some truck repair in there, and there's actually a truck wash in that building as well. This is all, and I should probably explain just a little bit about Pure Trucking, so I'll take that moment to do it right now. Pure Trucking is a, quote-unquote, a long-haul transportation business, and they serve Tier 1 and Big 3 automotive. So they currently own about 120, excuse me, 110 trucks and about 180 trailers. All the trucks are very new. The Tier 1 and Big 3, Ford especially, requires that people hauling directly for them come into the sites with new trucks. They're all 10 years old or more recent. So it's a, it's a new fleet. It's a nice-looking fleet. And they, Pure Trucking as a whole would just like to come in, purchase this site because, quite frankly, they've outgrown their current site in Troy, okay? Here's a larger view of the main development area. Again, you can see the two buildings, one facing Ryan and one further back. And you could see some of the proposed truck parking spaces. There's about 200. On the site, there's 245 truck and trailer parking spaces. And I'll talk about why the applicant's asking for that many in a minute. One thing I want to tell you right off, this question always comes up with these proposals, is he going to lease those spaces to somebody else? Some other user going to come in here? Absolutely not. This is for his business. These are not for lease. They're not for anybody else. He needs them all, okay? So let me be just real clear on that. He wants, he needs all of these truck spaces for his, for his business plan. All right, we'll go fairly quickly through a landscape plan. That's the overall. Again, I want to focus on this one. The landscape plan shows a very prominent berm along Ryan Road with some pretty strong plantings. I know that one of the, one of the things that's come up on these sites along Ryan in the past, especially the LM right across from the R1C, is the visual appearance of the development itself. Again, I think you'll see that the applicant has tried to come in with a very good-looking building, but also a very comprehensive landscape plan. The idea is that he wants it, really does want it to look good. This is his, this is his baby, his headquarters. So the landscape plan there. Again, here is the rendering of the first building off of Ryan. You're sort of at the southeast of the site, looking at the, sort of the southwest corner of the building, the main entry into the building. You can see the two-story windows and proposed architectural materials, split face block, but it's the impregnated at the factory with colors, not painted. It's the color that it is installed. It's part of the, part of the block. All right, here's the rendering of the rear building. Again, this is at the, sort of at the, off the northeast corner, looking at the, at the northeast corner of the building, sort of down from a different angle, looking at, again, at the two-story office end of it. You can see the overhead doors farther to the left. That's where they actually drive through to do the service on the vehicles. And again, on our site, overall site plan, we've made sure that they can drive through, and there's plenty of room for them to maneuver and get out before they get too close to the opposing building. All right, some architectural plans that are in here, not because I necessarily want to talk about them very much, but, but they were part of the package that came to the township. So I included them in this PDF. So, first floor plan. Of course, here's the, sort of the primary thing in terms of visual appearance. This is, this is the elevation of the first building in off Ryan, the 29,000-square-foot building, that shows, shows the view. That top view is what you'd be looking at from Ryan Road. Again, split face block, color-impregnated, and there's a couple of accent rows in there as well. Pretty fair amount of glass for the office. And this is architectural of the rear building. Let me get back to the... You know what? I'm going to leave that alone. Just, if we need to get back to the overall site plan, we will. Let me talk just a little bit about the number of truck and trailer spaces. Again, there's really a couple reasons for why he's asking for 245. And at first, when he walked into my office and said he was asking for, I was like, really? I don't know. What's, what's going on there? First of all, one was just the reaction to our recent COVID-19 shutdown. He had a situation where he has 110 trucks and 180 trailers that are almost always out on the road, that now he has a building, you know, excuse me, a business that's shut down, and he's scrambling to try to find a place to park those. So that was really sort of a wake-up call. At his current location, he has nowhere near enough space for that fleet to park anywhere. But second, this has more to do with the business model that he, that he's operating under. Many of the people that he's transporting goods for require him to take the goods in a trailer and then deliver them days or weeks or even months later. So he's in effect providing storage of loaded trailers, you know, with, with goods somewhere. And in this case, he'd like to do it in a place that he can control, that's fenced, that's close to home in his own business, instead of having to manage a, sort of a network of parking spaces because he doesn't have enough at the Troy location. He can put all this stuff in one place where he can control it, and it's close to home for him. So that's really, that's the explanation on the number of, of truck and trailer parking spaces. So let's talk about traffic for just a little while. Of course, as part of putting this package together, I told him I wasn't going to touch it unless they got somebody to do a pretty good traffic study and bring it in. Row Incorporated did the traffic study that was submitted with this proposal. It shows pretty much what you'd think it shows. The traffic on Ryan's lousy. There's just, I mean, there's no way to sugarcoat it. There, you know, peak, peak morning coming through Ryan there, the peak hour, there's like 1,000 cars coming through Ryan on the two-lane road. The peak PM's even worse. There's like 1,600 cars coming through there. So this, here's what I want to stress. That's, that's what's out there right now. The traffic out there is, is not good. Here's what I want to stress. This proposal is going to impact that very, very little for a couple of reasons. First of all, in spite of the scope, 21 acres where most of it's parking of trailers, they don't generate nearly the traffic that you think they might, okay? So he's got a fleet of 110 trucks, like, almost all of them are long-haul. There's 90 right now. There's 90 that are doing round trip to El Paso, Texas. There's another 15 or so that are doing round trip to somewhere in Tennessee. Those trucks, and they're sometimes one, one driver, sometimes it's driver teams, on average, they actually only come back to this site once every eight or nine days, okay? So he's got, basically, the fleet that, that's out there doing the work isn't really, you know, total. They're looking at maybe six, seven, eight trips per day tops from that whole long-haul fleet. He does have some short-haul trucks that just manage the, manage the goods and the warehousing. There's about five of those. Sometimes they're in and out of the site once a day, sometimes twice a day. But really, when you look at this site from a total trip generation, you're looking at about 20 round trips on semi per day, which is, which is actually quite low. The second reason that this will impact that traffic study very little is the traffic study specifically geared towards the worst-case driving out there, the peak, peak PM rush hour, peak AM rush hour. Again, Pure Transportation's business model doesn't like having their trucks sit in a traffic jam any more than you think they would. They time those things so that they're not coming back to the site during a peak hour, either morning or evening. Usually, the short-haul ones are out of there well before the, well before the 7:00 a.m., and they're coming back after 6:00, especially if they're doing two, you know, two trips locally, okay? So really, about the only people regularly coming in and out of there during a peak hour are the office staff and the warehouse workers, okay? The passenger vehicles, the trucks, the semis. Again, you, you will not see them in and out of there during the worst rush hour times. And, you know, I'll say this too, because the question will probably come up. So he's got a, you know, he's got 110 trucks. Now, what if the business grows? Well, I hope every business in Shelby Township grows. But think about it. Even if he's going to double or even triple, let's say he's up to 60 trips in and out of there in a day, okay? He's, let's say all 60 of those trips were at the peak PM hour, 60 trips. That, Ryan's taking 1,600 cars a day right now. Even if all of his trips were at the worst time, you're like in 3% or 4% difference on the peak, the worst hour. Again, so when I, I'm confident when I can stand in front of you and say, look, this proposal is not going to affect the existing traffic problems out there. It really isn't. It's negligible. Are there traffic problems out there? Yes. Does that mean you should stop developing until the road commission gets it sorted out and gets five lanes all the way up to 23 Mile Road? I don't think so. I really don't think that's the right approach. There was a recommendation in the traffic report about, about the Department of Roads perhaps changing the timing of the traffic lights. If you, if you were diligent, read through the report, I know your planners did, they noted those. I have forwarded the traffic report to the Department of Roads, and I've made contact with them about suggesting they amend the lights. Whether or not this proposal moves forward, those are changes that they could make that, according to our traffic consultant, would help the situation right now. Again, it's not a silver bullet. It's not going to fix everything, but it would be an improvement out there. So I think with that, I've talked long enough about the proposal. I'm certainly available for any questions you have right, for me right now, okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the effort to sell the Ryan Road traffic. I live in the area, and I can tell you, Ryan Road is a mess. Some would say peak time on Ryan Road is pretty much every day, all day long. So to say that I don't, that the trucks are not going to impact the traffic, I find that a little bit hard to believe because I've sat on Auburn Road, I've sat on Ryan Road. Depending on the day of the week or the time of the season, it's an absolute mess there. I'm glad you brought that up because that's the big elephant in the room. I have a question, though, about the current location in Troy. You said they have 110 trucks currently. Are they parking all those trucks in Troy?
No, they're almost never at the, they're almost never at the facility.
Where do they park them, then, if they're not parked at Troy?
They're, they're all driving them, yeah.
The Troy location is, I did a Google search, and you're in the industrial section of that area, about a half hour from here. And you have a clear shot up to 15 Mile, Maple Road, and then a clear shot over to Rochester. Even though it's an industrial section in this part of the township, the big difference is right across the street, as you've noted, is the single-family homes. So we have to be cognizant and take that into consideration when we look at this. I will say that I believe that the use for the property could be justified as a trucking company. The size and scope and the intensity of what you're proposing is what I'm struggling with and have an issue with. Some of the traffic information I looked at said there were going to be 30 trucks in the AM and 25 trucks in the PM. Is that all you pretty much expect?
No. See, and that's rows, that's not trucks. That's all vehicles to the site, and they're doing that based on an average square footage of a trucking business, and they make no differentiation between long-haul and short-haul. So that's not trucks, that's trips, and it's all vehicles, and it lumps a long-haul business with a short-haul business, which is a mistake when it comes to accurately forecasting the traffic.
Sort of less trucks.
Yes, definitely.
See, that, that, that's another issue I have, and I know you've explained it, but if it's less than 55, and you're asking for four to five times that amount of parking spaces for these trucks and trailers, you can see why, to me, that would raise some red flags. Not just to me, but for the residents who are living across the street who had a pretty bad experience with the last company that was in there with the dust and the noise. What time would you think that the, they would begin entering and exiting the trucking at this site?
You mean what time of day?
What time in the morning would they start?
Well, the, the short-haul truck, let's sort of draw a line. Those five or six, those five trucks right now that are doing short hauls, they leave between 6:00 and 7:00, and they get back between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., okay?
Okay.
The long-haul trucks are much more dependent on the schedule of who they're hauling for than their own schedule. So you would, you may likely see them, they would definitely avoid the peak, the peak hours, the traffic jam hours, as you say. Maybe there is not any hours to avoid there. But, but they'd be looking to arrive and depart from the site, especially at times when it, when, when traffic was least impactful to their business. Honestly, when they're coming back from El Paso, Texas, my suspicion is that they would, they would enter the site whenever they, whenever they came back. And if they were going to, you know, stop a little while to wait till rush hour got through, come a little later in the evening. But really, I think the long hauls, they arrive, again, they're, they're on a, basically, they're on a six-day out, and then they got to be down, the, the team's then they gotta be down, the teams have to be down for two and a half days.
So they could leave like at 3:30, 4:00 in the morning?
It's conceivable. I think it's much more likely that you'd see them coming back at a random late hour than actually leaving that early. I think the leaving in the morning would be a little more consistent and probably in the 6:00 to 7:00 AM range.
Okay. Finally, I'll just give you some more good news, since I'm full of it tonight. I'm not really a big fan of the rendering you showed. You're showing this huge wall of split-faced block and then the siding. Take into account, this is across the street from a residential development, what they're going to be looking at every day. You got the dust, you got the noise, and then you've got this Berlin Wall sitting there, they're staring at it. So that's another concern that I have on the plan that you submitted. And again, these are just my initial thoughts, but I wanted to get that out there for your consideration, so the public can know when they come up to speak to. Okay?
Okay. I got it noted here.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions of Mr. Snyder?
Chairman Turner.
What's that? Gene, go ahead.
All right. My question is, how many POVs are private vehicles you're going to have there, based on the number of employees you're going to have?
I didn't understand the question.
Employees are you going to have in the facility? And then that dictates how many member vehicles they're going to have.
In the facility versus out driving the trucks?
No, in the facility.
I think he's got in the neighborhood of about, I think he's got in the neighborhood of about 25 staff right now at his current location. But that's total staff. That's not in the building all at the same time. So a facility like this, I think it's reasonable to expect you're going to have, you know, about 15 in the back warehouse. You're going to have whatever you need. The truck bays, many times the trucks are sitting in the truck bays, not actively being worked on. And they're, you know, they have less mechanics than they have truck bays. I'm going to just, without having a heart-to-heart discussion with my client, I'm going to say probably about 20 in the back and probably about 30 in the front office.
So that will add to the traffic congestion as well.
Yeah, again, those vehicle, yes, those passenger vehicles that are coming at normal business hours, yeah, they'll be accessing the site during, you know, normal business hours, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Moore.
I have a question. Hi, Mr. Snyder.
Sure.
A question. You had brought up that there will be materials stored in the trailers and trucks.
Correct.
What materials are you speaking of?
The tier-one in automotive suppliers will contract with Pure Transportation to store essentially what I consider store the materials. It's a transport contract, meaning they got to take it from point A to point B, but they're going to say, you got to take it from point A, and you got to deliver it at point B three months later. And it could be anything, really. It could be, I mean, it's not going to be hazardous ways, but it could be anything automotive-related in a trailer packed for delivery.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grove, go ahead.
Does Pure Trucking owns most of the trucks?
They own all of the trucks.
All of them?
Yes.
Any refrigerator truck that would be parked outside and refrigerator running all night?
Not to my knowledge. I didn't ask that question to my client, but no, I don't believe so.
Of course, these are mostly diesel trucks?
Yes.
How many trucks would that building hold? Because this is a storage and wash and repair facility. How many trucks that building could store?
I believe there's either, there's either seven or eight repair bays. So that's seven. And then there's a truck wash one, which wouldn't store anything. I think they'd be in getting washed and getting out.
So when you're referring, storage is mainly outside storage?
Yeah. The trucks and the trailers, that's what, that's the nature of the special land use request. There's those outdoor truck and trailer parking spaces we're showing there. Yeah.
What's the address in Troy?
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized. I could, I could find it.
We'll find it. Yeah, we'll find it.
Yeah, I know. There's been a variety of people poked into it. I know your planners, they probably, they might even have it handy, but I know that they were also looking into it.
Are they still operating in Troy?
Yes.
And what's the timeframe on constructing that building? When, if you get approval?
Okay, so if you, it's certainly not going to be tomorrow. If you were to give approval, let's say you give approval tonight. That's special land use, got to go to the board, I got to do engineering on it. Are we breaking construction summertime next year-ish? Yeah, that's probably about the quickest it could go, based on, you know, getting the special land use completely approved, getting engineering completely approved through all the review bodies, so.
In the meantime, the trucks would be parked already?
No, they're still, they're still out driving around. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, but the minute, the minute they take the ownership of that property, do they own the property?
No, they do not own it at this point.
They do not. So the minute they take ownership, they can store stuff there, right?
Unless there was a condition of the special land use approval. Actually, I'm going to have to defer to your planner. I don't know if you approve the special land use, they can start parking or not. But my understanding is, you got to have the building up before the ancillary use goes up. But your planner and your attorney probably could weigh in better on that.
The parking, the site will be paved or blacktop?
So the passenger vehicle area and the truck maneuvering around the main buildings is concrete. There might be some asphalt for the pure passenger vehicles. The back of the parking lot, actually, the client is sort of campaigning to pave it all. Again, he's serving some pretty, I don't want to say snooty, but elite big three, and he's not a big fan of dust or mud on the vehicles in any situation. So when he approached us, he had plans of paving it all. We were like, you know, are you sure you want to do that? Asphalt millings controls the dust pretty well. It makes, it generally makes a pretty good surface when you roll it down. It's much better than just regular gravel. Let's talk about millings. If the budget works and you want to pave it all, you know, it's his money. So.
And how long they been in business?
I don't know. I haven't asked.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to wait for the public hearing, and then we'll probably have summarized summary of what we had.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to the public. This will be the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. I'm going to ask anyone who wants to speak to come down to the front. You can speak into the mic loud and clear so we can hear you. And when you're done, make sure you sign the sheet so we have attendance record that you hear for the minutes. Okay? Anyone want to come down and speak? Now is the time to do so. Come on down.
I'm going to go.
You're first. Go ahead.
My name's Kathy Deaton.
Hold on. Come on up to the mic first, so they can get you.
I'm thinking you could probably hear me from back there.
Yeah, but go ahead. They may not be able to in there, but go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. My name's Kathy Deaton, and I live very close to the vicinity of the address. And I have lived there for most of my life, since like the '65. And I have seen trucks coming in there and out of there my whole life. The dirt is horrible. The noise is horrible. The reverberation on the house, I mean, there are no pictures at the front of our house because they always fall off the wall. I mean, when these trucks come down through Ryan Road, it's very close to the house. And we were told last year when somebody wanted to go into the place down the road, that the bridge down the hill on Ryan is never going to be widened. They said that would never happen at the Clinton River. And the traffic study, I'm wondering, when was that done? I mean, right now, traffic is great compared to what it was when we were in a normal situation before COVID. You know, I mean, it's still horrible trying to get out of the driveway. Sometimes I wait five minutes trying to pull out of my driveway. And I can turn around. A lot of the people that are across from there cannot turn around. They don't have a driveway that permits that. So I'm wondering, when that study was done, if it was now, or, you know, through this COVID time or previous to that? And it really concerns me about the pavement and also about the time of the business. Like you're saying, there could be people coming in at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. It is not a quiet entrance for me. I mean, from experience throughout my life being there. So I am very concerned about this.
All right. Thank you. Make sure you sign in now. Just so you know, the traffic study I have right here, it's dated June 11th of 2021.
So that is now?
Right.
Which is, traffic's much better right now.
Believe me, I live in that area. Traffic in Ryan is not good any day, really, so.
I know.
Anyone else want to come down and speak? Come on down.
Jim Cable, 47169 Frederick Road, Shelby. I'm two streets back of Ryan. And she made a great point about the windows vibrating, and I even thought to bring that up. And Mr. Turner, I swear you were looking at my notes when you made your comments.
No, I wasn't really, but go ahead.
The approval of this proposal is going to affect more than just the houses on Ryan. There's a couple hundred houses in that subdivision adjacent from this proposal. It's going to affect our quality of life. Right now, with the industrial on Ryan Road, it's constant backup beeping alarms all day, all night long. And I can't imagine this will be any better in that situation. Noise pollution was number one on my list, and it's been on the previous two comments list. It's just deafening, the constant beeping, the diesel fumes. My neighbor has asthma, and he is constantly complaining about the diesel fumes. The dust has been brought up. The last time the proposal was made for this same property, I suggested that the owner give us car wash vouchers. That's how bad it is. Not to mention the constant flow of an already overburdened rate of traffic on Ryan Road. I'm glad she brought up the date of this study because my wife works in Southfield. It takes her, she's quicker to get from Southfield to 18 Mile on Ryan than it is from 18 Mile on Ryan to our street. It's backed up from 18 all the way to Auburn Road on evenings. And I know people coming from the north, it's that way in the morning. It's backed up on 23 Mile, trying to get on Auburn Road. I've got a couple of things that I wrote down here, just listening. 25 people, employees in that building of that size is awful odd to me. I know you said warehousing. I'd like to know what they're going to warehouse there, if the storage was all in the trucks. What else do I got written down here? I was going to mention the time it takes to, she lives right on Ryan. It takes about five minutes to get out of our subdivision any time of the day. I live, I would exit our subdivision where that building is. My road to get out is right across the street from that. Auburn Road, I know, Mr. Turner, you live there. Auburn, I can't get out of my street going off of Auburn. That intersection at Auburn and Ryan is not meant for trucks. Constantly, people have to back up if they're in the left turn lane for a truck to make a left turn or a right turn. That intersection is way too small for truck traffic. In fact, up until recently, it was probably one time a week that a truck was knocking over traffic signals on the side of the road. And I think they ended up, the county moving those back. I know the last time a proposal was made here, I had a list made, and I still have it. There are at least 11 semi-truck storage and repair facilities between 22 Mile and M59 that are documented already. That's how many trucks are going through there now. I've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 proposals for these facilities that were made in the last five years. Some of these are operational, some of them aren't. And a point was made up by someone here, that this exact location, the last proposal, the guy who was working out of there and storing vehicles and repairing vehicles, never did a thing to the site plan. Never put a berm up, never did anything. If this is approved, I don't want to see a pickup truck parked there before that building is up and there's some type of landscaping. I think he addressed one of my questions, were they going to sleep in these trucks? Apparently not. It's not the normal type of trucking that's going on there. What are you warehousing? You mentioned 110 trucks, and some of those are short haul trucks. How many short haul trucks? Those are the ones that I'm concerned about as a resident. If they're coming in after 6:00, 6:00, we're home from work. We want quiet time. So that's what we're going to hear, all these short haul trucks coming in same in the morning. We're going to hear that beeping before we even wake up. I mean, they get us up before their alarm clocks do. And I have the names, the addresses of all these trucking companies, if you guys want them. I need to know the hours of operation of the normal business, not just the trucking. Are they going to be repairing these trucks after 5:00 or before 7:00? I just got a note here that these houses in the subdivision, I've been there 25 years. My house was built in 1930. So these houses are, a good many of them were built long before this Ryan Road trucking issues were ever an issue. A lot of these homes, and probably the rest of them, were made in the 60s. So this subdivision is a very old subdivision. And we were here long before the trucks were. I've got some notes here about the approaches. A lot of these companies that are along Ryan right now, the approaches are all made of gravel, and they just spread that on the road. Ryan just was newly paved here a couple years ago. And I just really hate to see that get degraded anymore with just the gravel and the mud that's generated. Auburn Road, which was a big thing being paved here a few years back, when it rains, there's probably this much mud on the side of the road from these trucks. And the drainage is terrible. Ryan Road is just, you need a four-wheeler sometimes to get through there. Deceleration lane and a passing lane, I believe, was proposed on the east side of Ryan, which will cut into those homeowners' frontage, which I know was probably allowed, but they're going to lose some area. I think that's about all I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Make sure you sign in.
I will.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on down, sir.
I'm Tom Gilbo, 50551 Gravel Ridge. Jim said a lot about what I had notes about. Previously, well, one thing, if it is approved, which I hope not, I'd like to, I think Jim mentioned it, I'd like to see the berm up and not see that property before anything else is done. Because one of the trucking companies that got closed previously, that was one of the problems. They opened up, they never did the berm. I think, I'm not positive, so someone can correct me, I think there's one of the trucking companies companies right now, they're trying to get out of there, they keep finding them, but the trucking company keeps paying the fine because it's cheaper than moving out. So, but you're fine. Something's got to be done about it. I'm laid off now, but I'm retired, but I was working part-time. I live at 23 in Shelby. I was working on 23 Mile between Ryan and DeQuinder. I had to be there at 6:00. I left at 3 minutes to 6:00. Never late. Anyway, coming from Ryan, heading east on 23 Mile when I was heading west, it was not uncommon to see three trucks in a row that early in the morning. At 6 o'clock in the morning, I'd have to wait for trucks to go by so I could pull out onto 23. Traffic there is amazingly a disaster. Sometimes, I can't get out of my subdivision. I have actually went to go somewhere and sat there so long, I went back home. I live about 10 houses south of 23. This happened a while ago, but twice to me, once to my neighbor. Traffic was so bad going south on Ryan, that trucks pulled in front of me to turn left because they were waiting so long to turn left. I came about a foot from hitting one, and the guy just stared at me, then he flipped me to bird. Okay, I think it's totally ridiculous, they just paved Ryan. For a long time, I couldn't go south on Ryan without destroying my truck. Shelby between Mond and Shelby was the same, and heading up Shelby Road going south was the same. So that was a disaster. Thankfully, it's been paved, but I think the trucks are going to tear it up pretty quick. I got, if they add a lane, they're going to take property off of the people on the east side of the road. In my opinion, in my opinion, it's going to put those trucks that much closer to those people's houses. They already have a problem with dust, dirt, noise, and everything else. I just think the whole thing's a bad idea. I've talked to people about it. I've had people tell me, well, you don't have to race around. If you get caught behind a truck, it's because you're speeding. Okay? My last ticket was in 1974. I've never had an accident. I've driven cross-country towing travel trailers. I've owned a travel trailer for 49 years. I've had a CDL for hauling heavy equipment. I used to drive numerous miles. I pulled multimillion-dollar cars, I restored cars. I pulled multimillion-dollar cars across the country. I'm not against trucks. Without them, we'd be in a big mess. But I don't believe it belongs where it does. There's places on Van Dyke on Ryan, these trucks, if they put them there, they have to come down 23 Mile to hit 53. And to get to 59, they can't enter 59 off Ryan, so they're going to have to jog down to Quinder. Put it where they have better access. I think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, to the point about trucks and the turning, I sat at the light at Auburn and Ryan by Speedway, and I've been one of those brave people who sat there as the truck and trailer turned the corner, and he miraculously missed my car. I have no idea how he did it. So I'm perfectly aware of what's going on. Oh, yeah, it's not good. And one point I'll just make that Mr. Snyder mentioned earlier about the building, the easternmost building will be the predominant feature on the site. I might argue that the storage, 245 trucks probably would be the predominant feature of the site. That's one of the concerns I have, so. Anyone else wish to speak from the floor? Come on up, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Batke. I live at 4974 Ryan Road, which is a little block or so down from where this site is going to be. My concern is, I think there's a need for a left-hand turn lane. The problem is, thank you. The problem is, there's water and electrical on the west side of the street, and they have plenty of room, except they've got those two issues there to expand if you put a left-hand turn lane. The housing that's on the east side of the street has extremely short front yards, extremely short front yards. And even to lose six feet or so, I mean, we're going to have the road, you know, very, very close to the front door. And even though there's a need for that left-hand turn lane, that's my big concern.
Okay, thank you. Come on down.
Joe Almond, I live at 47744 Ryan Road. And I like what you, it's big, it's nice. Right now, it doesn't, looks abandoned, everything looks, and there's been kind of a misfit property where we've had Titan Trucking in there, and the only thing with Titan Trucking is just don't turn left, because every time they went to turn left, somebody was getting rear-ended right in front of my house. So if they keep going right into there, it'd be fine, but that never always happens, you know, so they got to go left in. And I didn't realize how massive it is. See, Chris Sinicori, I live right across from him, he's here today, and he's done a beautiful job with his place. He's back further, he's got a nice building, but I think he's, these are like twice the size. It's hard for me to look at the floor pan, but you know, he's got the office that's a single-story, not double-story. He's got, you know, construction in the back and, you know, repair areas back there. He's getting more and more busy, as I see, as he's been, you know, doing well, successful, and that's what my concern is with this. He gets successful, Chris gets successful. There's also, on the south side of Chris Sinicori, is a sign for Future Rosafa, which is another trucking company. They've got a sign up right now. I don't know the address of that one. I don't know if it's actually going through. But he, so now you would have, and he's doing very well, Rosafa, because he's over on 22 Mile, and he is filled to the max, I noticed. I don't know his address exactly on 24, or 22 Mile. So if he's moving over there, and he's getting big, and you're, these guys are getting big, Chris Sinicori's getting big, it's just a squeeze fest over there to get everybody in and out of there. So I'm not even really worried about the hours of the day or anything like that anymore. I'm more concerned about the fact that the area just can't handle big trucks anymore. I mean, Chris has got big trucks, that's, Rosafa's got big trucks, all the leasing companies own for the big trucks. Something like, even dealership would be better, with just cars coming in, because getting those trucks to turn left off of that two-lane highway into there, that's a chore. A lot of people don't like it. And on top of that, I've also noticed that in the Sunset Farms area, that more traffic is coming out of there on Ryan. I don't know why, it never used to be that way. I don't know if it's more convenient for people to come out through Howell Street, and I think there's, what's the street that's just on the south side of the fire station? I'm sorry? Post, thank you, Post. Those are very, very hard to get, see in and out, to get onto Ryan. So I find that, those people kind of jump the gun to get going on there. I don't understand why they're backed up there, too, but that area is a very, very gridlocked area. And I like to see everybody succeed. I don't like to see that looks abandoned, you know, it looks terrible the way it is. There is somebody that is cutting that land right now. I think MJ Electric was in there. They had, they were doing like high-tension wired towers and things like that, but they weren't there all the time. Now they're out, I think. Their sign's still there, but all their equipment's gone, and all their, they're using it more as a yard, it looked to be. They seemed okay, they just, because I think they're using that more for a storage facility. This is more of an active, ongoing, everyday business. As far as I see, you know, with these trucks coming in and out and the car washing, it's a day-to-day thing going on from, it's a mechanic shop. And any mechanic shop that you have, it's busy, it just is. So that's where I'm at right now. I like to see everybody grow and everything, I just feel this is just way too big for the site. I thought they were going to use only the first part of the parcel, but the second part of parcel is very, just as large as the first. So that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I like your term squeeze fest, that's a good one. Anyone else? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Carl Jason Ragsdale. I live at 47312 Eldon. And I like to voice my opposition to the pure trucking site plan and thank my fellow neighbors. I live to the, I live in the neighborhood just east of the proposed site, and I'm reminded today of my being terrified of public speaking, so bear with me here as I look at some notes. Even if you don't live in that neighborhood, just east of Ryan, as I do and some of the folks here, I'm sure you can empathize with those of us who live near the site. I'm sure you wouldn't really want something like this built right next to your neighborhood either. I have a six-year-old son, and we like to ride our bikes in our neighborhood. We'd like to continue to do so without the added air and noise pollution from just across Ryan Road. Sometimes, we ride or play sports at Riverbends Park, which is just a stone's throw away from this proposed development. It seems many other families in Shelby Township also enjoy Riverbends for sports, and not just those of us who live south of it there. I know my son's league sends out a regular message warning people to arrive very early due to traffic congestion at Hamlin and Ryan Roads. I know many residents, not just those of us south of the park there, are very concerned with the state of traffic congestion there. And I don't think anyone in this room really believes that adding 200 trucks across the street will have a minimal impact on traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Did a good job. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on down. No. I'm not that intimidating, I mean, really, come on.
I just got a member of your people, just like me.
That's right. Step up to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Give your name and address.
Shelley Lawrence, 47475 Vanker, Shelby Township. I agree with everybody here, and I just forget what I'm saying, because I'm nervous. I wanted to ask, how many people usually show up to these meetings? Like, how full is this audience usually? Is there like two people or 30?
Depends on the issue we're taking. This is pretty good turnout, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Maybe there's usually like two people here, and this is just to show you how strongly people are against this. It seems like everyone's against it, so just take that into consideration, how strongly people are against this. So usually, people don't show up to meetings unless they're against.
Motivated, yeah.
Yes, there you go. So, and then like he was saying about the, most everybody's saying about the traffic, but then he was saying about how many people are employed there. But yeah, there are going to be, you know, extra 25 people or 40 or whatever employed, too, so that's going to be besides the traffic people and just the smell and the noise and the dust and the everything. So, so anyway, that's it.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and sign in. Anyone else? Going once?
I can ask a couple more questions.
No, you've already been up once, so, no, can't do that. I appreciate that, but no, can't do that.
Hi, Tom Vitellio, 48111 Ryan Road. Under correspondences, you do not read a letter that we had sent to the committee?
Did we have one?
It was in the packet.
Probably in the packet.
It was, I hope I didn't pay for my son's law degree for no good reason.
No.
It was in a packet.
Here, I'll give this, too. You can read that if you'd like.
Oh, that was in our packet, so do I still address it?
You said, you said correspondences.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I should have said, did we get any additional correspondence? We got your letter.
Okay.
And we had an additional. Would you like us to, why don't you go ahead, since you're here, why don't you talk about your letter for the record?
I was just looking for a berm at the west end of my property at his property, because I know what can happen with storage. I've been in the construction business my entire life.
Okay. Duly noted, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up.
Sir.
Could you sign in for us, too, before you get away? Thank you. Anybody else? Going once? Whoop, okay, come on down.
Hi, my name's Chris Sinicori. I own the building at 47631 Ryan Road, right next to the proposed pure site. I actually, Fred is a customer of mine, I actually refer, I worked at his other piece of property where his building is now, I actually referred to him for this piece of property. He's got trucks in his property now, but like, when we've worked at his building numerous times, hardly, I've never even, I can't say if I've seen a truck come or go, to be honest. He lives locally in the neighborhood, he'll build a beautiful building and keep it nice. You know, I think as long as there's pavement, the dust will be down. So I don't think it'll be a bad fit. I think it would improve the neighborhood, especially with the properties vacant, like some of the other homeowners said, it's just, it's slightly, I think it needs, something needs to be done with it.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Close the public portion? Julie, we'll turn it over to you.
Do you want to make a motion to?
Oh, can I have a motion to close a public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Pete, you're back. Julie, why don't we go ahead with your review first, and then we'll, or Nick, I'm sorry, then we'll go with some questions.
Thank you. So as has been discussed by the engineer already, this is a special land use for a long and short haul trucking company. The proposed uses on the site are within two large buildings, it's office, warehousing, truck repair, and truck wash. Those are permitted uses in the industrial zoning district. The special land use for in this case would be the large amount of truck parking and trailer parking on the site. So that's where the special land use requirement falls in. As I said before, there's a large amount of truck parking. There's about 245 truck paces proposed on the site that includes both parcels. The northernmost parcel will feature majority of the truck park, and with the southernmost parcel featuring the two large buildings. With the site plan, they provided a bypass and a acceleration lane on Ryan Road. This will all be done within the right-of-way for Ryan Road, so it would not encroach any further into anybody's yards, you know, beyond what's already within the right-of-way. As far as the traffic study goes, Mr. Snyder identified that the traffic study identified certain deficiencies in our road system, particularly along Ryan and Hamlin and Ryan and Auburn Road. Yeah, I would appreciate those findings for the timing of the lights and the cycling of lights being communicated with the Macomb County Department of Roads. And should this be approved or not, I'd still like to see those changes be implemented so that way you can get at least a little bit of relief for the residents and businesses operating along that stretch of Ryan. With that being said, the site plan itself is in line, for the most part, with our zoning district and our master plan designation for that property. That's the use itself. Now, we're looking at the special land use itself, that's the large amount of trucking. That's going to have effects on the neighboring properties, specifically the residential properties across the street. So we want to make sure that the utmost care is taken to make sure that those properties aren't negatively impacted any further than they already are. And with that, the applicants have provided dust control, noise control in the form of the large berm in front with the landscaping, and the two large buildings, which I would think will help cut down on noise. As far as dust control goes, the forward portion of the site along Ryan Road is paved with concrete, so that would help control dust. And as Mr. Snyder stated, they'll be using asphalt millings prospectively for now until they decide if they want to pave or not, the rest of the site, which would help cut down the dust for the area. And for the, the timing of the building occupation, the site occupation itself, the plant and commission could always put a condition in that the site cannot be occupied until, you know, the site improvements are done, but that's a given with our ordinance anyway. They won't be able to occupy the site with any trucks until the site plan has been vetted by the building department, make sure everything has been done and completed. by the building department, make sure everything has been done and completed. With that being said, I have a few minor comments I have to make on this site plan. We did go through a preliminary review on this site, so we got, we took care of the majority of the regulation side of the zoning district and zoning conformity issues. The only items remaining, I'll go over now. And the first item would be the major two screening, which is required between R10 and multiple family low-rise districts. On the site plan, they're proposing a large retention pond as the screening between those two districts. This would require a variance, should this be approved. And for the facade of the buildings themselves, the township master plan recommends for industrial uses, brick or other high-quality masonry for office space exteriors, which Mr. Turner went over as well when he has questions for the applicant. The smooth metal and color-integrated concrete panels are appropriate for warehousing manufacturing spaces generally. Section 4.13. D. Point two of the zoning ordinance outlines requirements for fencing and screening of the storage areas. The use of the chain-link fencing with the side obscuring simulated wood slats would require planning commission approval, should the plan go forward. The existing conditions, as I went over, along Ryan Road were not ideal, and I wanted the applicant to communicate those findings of the traffic study with the county, which they have been in progress of doing. I also had a comment about the rise in potential nuisance, particularly about truck operators sleeping in the cabs of their cars. I believe this was already covered by the applicant themselves, but I wanna make sure that would not be an issue moving forward if this were to get approved by the planning commission and the township board. And that is the full extent of my comments as of now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Snyder, let's go back through some of the questions that were raised.
Sure.
From the public, if you can. There was some talk about the warehouse, and you're gonna be, what will you be storing in the warehouse that you're not storing in the trucks?
Okay, so, sometimes they need, sometimes they take delivery of something that needs to be distributed to more than one place. Sometimes they would need to be stored. Again, it's all auto, it's all automotive materials, all big three and tier-one supplier materials. Again, if you want a specific list of the things that he's, that he's transporting now and warehousing now, I can certainly provide that. But again, it's all automotive stuff that's for transport. The warehouse would be, much of the warehouse is actually, I won't say much of it, but some of the warehouse isn't just strictly warehouse, it's also transfer, meaning they've gotta take it, they need to unload it in bulk from one vehicle and parcel it into two others. So, there's, there's transfer space included in that warehouse number as well. So, again, I, I can't stand in front of you and say it's, you know, it's frames or it's wiring widgets, or it's, I can get you a list of exactly what he's storing now, if, if that's, if that's of issue for you.
I think you may have mentioned about, what is the number of short haul trucks versus long haul that you have?
I did mention it. There are five of the 110 that he owns right now. Five of them are local short haul, and the, and the remaining are all long haul. This is a long haul business. Then the short hauls, just to help out the long haul work that they do.
Are you gonna be repairing before 5:00 a.m. in the morning, do you think, these trucks?
No, and the repair is all inside the building. Again, unlike some of the proposals that you've had trouble with in the past, this isn't a case where they're gonna try to fix that guy, you know, the semi out in the, in the storage yard. They're inside in the base. I'm assuming that's normal business hours. They're not gonna try to fix them. And, and again, it's not heavy, it's not heavy repairs, it's the light, sort of the light repairs that they don't need to send something back to a dealership for.
Okay. There were some questions about the drainage on Ryan Road and acceleration and deceleration lanes on the east side. You wanna comment on that?
Yeah, again, the acceleration, the deceleration lanes on the east side, that's required. Macomb County Department of Roads would require that of any commercial entrance, trucking-related or not. That is, and again, it's completely paved. It's probably nine inches of concrete that they would put in for both the bypass lane and the deceleration and the entrance lane to the site.
The berm along the front, is that something you would agree to get that put up before anything else is done? Make that a priority on the development?
I'm sure that's something they would agree to, yes.
And I'm just gonna throw this out. Given that you don't have 245 trucks now, but obviously we want your business to grow, as any business, we want to grow. I guess I'd ask this of our planner. It seems to me that we, given the concerns that the people have raised and the sensitivity of this parcel to the surrounding neighborhood, is there something we could do to maybe make this a phased-in project, where we don't take a big bite of the apple at once, but if we were to go forward with this, give them what they need now to serve their current needs, and as the business needs grow and as the conditions maybe on Ryan Road are improved, we can expand the parking? Is that something that's possible?
It would be possible to enter into a phasing of the site, maybe to do with the buildings themselves, and then a larger degree of parking later. With that being said, the, the prospect of Ryan Road being improved significantly to handle more trucks is, is unlikely. I've talked with the Macomb County Department of Roads, and the most they have planned for this, for that stretch of Ryan is for pavement preservation, so that's fixing potholes, filling spots, not so much widening the road or adding to the integrity of the road itself. But phasing the sites, providing a reasonable degree of parking with the two buildings proposed, and then adding in parking later as the, you know, road system either decongests or becomes more tolerable, if possible. That may be feasible at a later time, yeah.
I can't see a decongesting in the area, that's for sure, especially if there's no real improvement plan for Ryan. Those of us who live in the area are gonna have to be stuck with what we have for quite some time, if not forever. So, that's just something I raised, because it seems like they have a big plan, and this development would be perhaps the largest truck storage facility in our township, if not the largest, one of the largest. So, that's just a major concern that, as you've heard, Mr. Snyder, from everybody who has spoken tonight.
Yeah, I got a couple things. I mean, first of all, yeah, we've got a, essentially they walked in the door and said, "Look, we wanna invest eight to 10 million dollars in the site and move here." And, and again, I, I represented Rosoffa when he got approved for the site to the south. I, I knew what I was walking into, fairly skeptically, I will add. You can talk to my client, I was like, "Really?" But again, I think over time I've been a lot more convinced that it, understanding the zoning of that property and what it could be used for, we've got a premier company that wants to move in here. I think, I'm getting tired of fielding phone calls from people who want a little nickel-and-dime the truck haul things, little 20 behind my building, a little 15, something here and here. This is a premier company that wants to move in and make a serious investment, not somebody who just wants five or 10 more parking spaces for a little extra cash behind a building that's already up. Okay, there's a pretty big distinction there. Many of the problems with those sorts of, you know, the sleeping overnight, the, you know, restrooms, those kind of things, that's, that's not an issue here. Okay, they don't, they don't stay there overnight. The park, they, they go home. They're long-haul truckers. There were a couple of things too that came up during the discussion I did wanna point out. Yes, the traffic report, the counts were done in 2021. They applied under, the traffic engineers know they're, I mean, they're not dumb. They know they're in a COVID year. I think they applied a 19% increase to the actual counts, whether or not that's enough. But they did take, attempt to take COVID, the lowered traffic in COVID into account in the report, okay? And the other thing is, this is a little different from some of the other businesses. This truck and trailer parking is like 500 and 600 feet back away from Ryan Road. It's not right up on the road. We got a building with some passenger parking in front. We've got a turnaround area in between some buildings. And after all that's developed, you know, if they throw the site plan up on the screen again, you'll see the truck and trailer part, the moving up, the, most of the backup beeping. I mean, it's like, I hear the residents. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not a jerk. I understand that area. I hear what they're saying, and I'm not trying to necessarily persuade in a bad sense, but it is a factor. That truck and trailer parking is 500 feet back from Ryan Road or more. It's not, it's not right up on the road like some of the other uses that they're used to. Okay? So, I did wanna, again, I did wanna point that out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Any other commissioners have any questions of Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Groot.
I, I have a, I have a comment, Mr. Snyder.
Sure.
Hey, you're absolutely correct. It is a big investment. And I, I like the way you package that. But please keep in mind that the residents made a big investment as well. They invested in, in their homes. Many times it's their life savings, and many times that's all they have. So, we have to weigh it. Big investment business coming in, but also the residents, they've been there for many, many years. They're gonna have to live with it. They're gonna have to live with the neighbor next door. So, I appreciate your comments, but we must be sensitive to the residents in our area as well. So, if, if we can phase in, as, as, as the planner mentioned somehow, to minimize the impact and, and, and come in and do the shock and awe kind of thing with the big investment that you say, and I know that your client most likely can back it up financially, but that would be a big shock to our residents there as well. Lot of unanswered questions. I, I think I would be in favor of tying up some loose ends with, with our planner, doing a little bit more homework, and come back and maybe come back with, with the phase-in kind of system. I'm not against it. I'm, I'm all for big investments in our community. We, we, we have to be business-friendly, but we also have to be sensitive to our residents in the area, so. And I'm sure you gentlemen back there, you wanna be good neighbors, without. So, that's my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Just to make it clear, we're not saying no, but you have to understand the sensitivities, as Mr. Groot said, the residents who've lived there for 50, 60 years, they've made a huge investment, not just in money, but in their time and in their energy for the township. So, that, we take that into consideration as a planning commission. So, um...
Yeah, I understand. You, you wouldn't be doing your job if you didn't.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you. Hearing none. A motion would be in order. Uh, is my mic working? A motion would be in order. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I, I will make a motion to postpone this until we do tie up the loose ends, but do we have to put a date certain, or how much the planner, how much time the planner would need to, to bring it back?
It can be postponed until we have time to address the concerns of the planning commission. Doesn't have to have a specific date for postponement.
What about the, the petitioner, or?
Yeah, I'm not gonna object to a postponement. Sort of a process moving forward. I'm assuming you'd like me to work with your planners about, about a phase line, about phasing a date.
Definitely, yes. I, I would suggest that, as, I made my comments very clear.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the question, maybe you can answer, maybe you can't. If we were to phase it, would you be expecting both of the buildings to go in with the initial phase? I'm, I'm sort of suspecting my client's gonna want them both because of the truck repair and the truck wash, which is a current issue for them right now, but I just wanted to sort of get it out there.
I wouldn't have a problem with that as long as the noise, that some of the noise, the berm in front, the passing lane or, or turning lanes, I, I wouldn't mind if you spruce up the facades. I think that was one of the issues. So, I, I would suggest to come back and, and, and see our planner, and.
Okay.
Anybody else wanna add anything? I, I will make a motion to postpone it, and it, you know, the, it's gonna be up to you how quickly you come back to.
We understand.
With, with the answers for us. We're not opposed to it. I, I want you to go ahead that, you know, that we kill the project. No, we, we love big investments, but we gotta be very sensitive to our, to our residents as well, 'cause they have a big investments as well. So, Mr. Chairman.
Before you make one motion, I, I would agree. I personally, I don't believe that my issue was not with the two buildings going up, it was with this massive sea of parking on this, on this site, which leads the impression like, as Mr. Groot said, shock and awe, all of a sudden, boom, 245 spots. So, that was my comment to that. Mr. Groot, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, move to postpone site plan number 21-22SU-5-Fickery, are you pronouncing your last name, Jeku?
Jeku.
Jeku?
Yes.
Jeku. Pure Trucking, 47861 Ryan Road, parcel number 23-07-30-426-006, and 23-07-30-200-011, located on the west side of Ryan Road, north of Auburn Road. Outdoor truck storage with wash and repair facilities to allow the applicants to address the following concerns. That's, of course, building facade, material, what type of material. Number two, impact on the road network and feasibility of suggested improvements. Again, we talked about that a lot. Identify and phasing plan that allow the incremental improvements to the site that will not overwhelm the road network, and address the concerns of the neighborhood, neighboring residents in regard to potential nuisance that may be caused by development of this site.
For a second, Mr. Snyder? Okay. Motion by Commissioner Groot, supported by Commissioner Snyder. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
No.
No? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowey?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Any true votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you soon.
Yep. Have a great night.
Thank you. Planning Director's report.
Uh, just one item. Mr. Turner, last, at the last meeting, I think you noticed Christie over down at the other end. Not, 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 not tonight, but.
Say where'd she go, yeah.
The previous meeting. So, Christie will be doing the minutes for the planning commission, and I just wanted to welcome her aboard. I think the last meeting, we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, so totally went over my head. So, welcome aboard, Christie. She's our new secretary, and we're looking forward to having her for a long time.
So, she's not here? The two-hour meeting chased her away?
Yeah, I know. No, she, she came back the day after. We're good.
Okay. Anybody have anything from business on the floor? Come on up.
I just have a question on, on your terms of postponement on this, or maybe a comment. Being postponed, Ryan Road's never gonna improve. We all know that. I mean, I've been to the Macomb County Road Commission, they're not gonna do anything with it, and you pointed that out. So, that, that's not gonna improve, and nothing about this is gonna improve. So, if they phase this in, at one point in time, it's still gonna be like it is as proposed. Nothing's changed. Just, just so that's in the back of your head for when they come back up. And I will take it that when it does come back up, that it won't be a public hearing, correct?
That's correct. It will not be a public hearing, but we will notify everybody that spoke, Mr. Cable.
And we won't have a say in it then at that point.
It, it'll be.
I won't say you won't have a say. It won't be a formal public hearing, but we've already heard, and we've got a good understanding of what the residents' concerns are. And the reason for postponement is we brought up a lot of issues, the commission and the residents. This gives them an opportunity to go back and see what they can do to address it, to see if it is worthy of moving forward.
Right.
And I do agree with you.
They might not want to, God knows, but, I mean, I understand the business, and they sound like a really reputable in, in investment there. And, and we do need something there other than a vacant lot. It's just not, it's just too big, just too big, so.
We hear you, yep.
But anyway, the reason why I was asking if, if we would have another chance to, to, I know that what transpired, a lot of people had other questions that, that they were brought up through the meeting. So, if they had a chance to speak again, I don't know. I know last time they, they didn't allow us to, but anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, thank you again for the time. I, I'd just like to say I, I agree with the
Hi, thank you again for the time. I, I'd just like to say I, I agree with the previous gentleman regarding the postponement. Nothing, as you know, will change regarding Ryan Road, even if you postpone it for a few months or a few years. And, and so I, I didn't realize that we weren't going to get a chance to speak again about it, and so I'm speaking now. I just wanted to say it's still a bad idea, even if it's a bad idea later than now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned. Good night, everyone.